And I guess over here.
Yeah. Yeah. I think. Was. And you know, I'm not. Not. I'm. I'm. In. Yes. Ah. That's. Then we just got again zero. But. Yes, yes, you know, yeah. It's nice. Yeah. So. We can talk about. Yeah. Yeah. Right. So now, what? We'll get. You're better than. You're not saying this. They look at me like. I think it's. I mean, well, it was. Just us. Yeah. Talk to these. We were set and hoping. Yeah. I'll get you. Oh, yeah. Plan and plan out. Going to her base. Their government. Yes. Most of my. Probably. That's a lot. Even that. Oh. I'm. One year. Yeah. Now, that's much. It's. Really. There was. Amazing. To be. There. And. When you. Six. Last. Five. They go.
Morning, Dave. All right. You're a pastor. You doing all right?
All right.
Doing well. I live there.
Well.
Where my agenda is. Ah. Oh, I know what I didn't do. Inside. Didn't bring my Google.
Well, what's your? Serious.
Very. Brothers.
Brother as well.
Because I didn't make.
It was a lot. Yeah. No, because you're into the following. Um. Yes.
No. Screw is over. And then.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was.
What about each other? They can say, uh. We go. So, okay, so you got. You're. You know, it's. You're not. Maybe. Uh. These.
Yeah.
No.
You don't want. No. So. No. I think. You. Yes. That's.
Oh, that's. Yeah. It's. It's.
All right.
All right. My.
Stay. I'm.
Good. All right. This.
Something.
You're. You're. Comments.
I don't.
This is.
I do. Answer this all. Okay. Over there. I'm going to. From the. The. We don't. I don't. Yeah. Yeah. The. I'm talking. Yeah. I have. Yeah. Me. I don't. That's. Yes. It's. What? We. Okay. So. I think. You're. I. I have. But there's a lot. I'll be. In a. Don't. Right. I see. You. I would. Get. And I'm. We want you. You know. Don't. I know. There's.
So then you. See this. You know. And you know. Yeah. What. So. Obviously.
I think that's. I think. That I'm calling about. You know. I don't. That's. I think so. Plus, but I'm. In my. Pay. They have something. There. I think. Yeah. Maybe. I think we're in. I was checking. If I was. Working. A lot. Because. We're. Well, it. I don't. I don't. I don't. Really. I don't. I think. That's. Something. I just. Well. They're. Right. Yeah. And. Yeah. Yes. That's. Better. We're doing. Kind of. I don't. Sorry. We don't. That's. Well.
Wait. Or how? Yes. Go here. You probably. Who?
He's laying in here, you know, where that. Uh. He, uh. She's just showing you what.
Okay. He's laying over here, and I just didn't know. He's pregnant.
It's just showing him, Rich. Who turned in the report. I'm like, but, yeah. Who turned in the. Yeah. Pretty much. You know, they're. 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 Yeah. That. It was my second. My is. May is over with. We're. We're short a bunch.
Uh, well, you don't turn any report till June for your May.
Right.
So, and this. Now, so seven days. So, they. They really have to end the Junes if they're May. That's. Kind of.
Okay.
You did. Right. That one. Uh. This. I mean, there. Good.
All right. Where's the? Renly. He's not. He's not. We're. No, he is not here. Rings. Cast. He went to Houston with his son. Oh, that's.
You have this time.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah. I have. There's three. Oh, you're. You know, it's four. Okay. Yes. Yes. She's. Okay. All right. Oh, so. I got one minute. Yeah. Is everybody here? No. Nine o'clock. All right. Did you please stand? Uh, I've asked, uh. Pastor Mike. With Victory Church. To open us in a word of prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today that we opened up this session of the Mission's Court. We remember the words that are written in these two flags and God we trust. So today we pray, we ask you, Lord, with wisdom. That you said you would give all of us. I pray for wisdom for the commissioners, for our county judge, and for the citizen. Today, as business is transacted here in this courtroom. So again, we thank you, Lord, for our county. Thank you for those that have been elected and those of us who serve as citizens in this county. We just thank you for your keenness and come, we will be done today on the serve as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Place the American flag.
I put it with the. In the. Pretty nice. And to. Roll into Japan's. What mention. Under God. In the physical. For the. And. Does. On the Texas flag. I put it in the. Leading Texas. One day under God. One. And.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will call. Commissioner Court meeting to order for June. Seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three, and we do have a forum present. And I will move to item number two, general announcements. And we have, uh. Allison. With the Ag Extension Service. There, I'll question back if you want to start.
Okay, so I'm Allison Morrow. I'm the Ag and Natural Resource Agent at, uh, Texaneum Agri Lab. Just down the, down the way there, and so I just wanted to come and present some of our programs that we've got going on. And just talk about what's going on in our office. So that first program that I, that is seen right there, that is our Northeast Texas Rural Land Summit, and that is coming up at the end of the month. Um, this program is geared toward. New landowners, whether you're new to, um, owning. More than half an acre or just new to East Texas, the East Texas area. It's in conjunction with Smith, Raines, and Kaufman Counties. And so it's multi-program, a multi-county program. We're hoping, uh, it's going to be a great one. It's also available, um, for real estate agents to get some CE hours. And so that's what the little numbers mean besides, beside some of those topics. Because we'll be talking about ag, ag valuation, some home sit exemptions. Us agents will be doing some demonstrations on taking soil tests, taking hay to pay, uh, samples. And then we'll have some panel discussions. And I'm excited about our vendors. And I say vendors, but they're mainly, um, agencies like the NRCS, USDA, the Texas Parks and Wildlife. We've got the Forest Service coming, um. And TDA is coming, uh, just to be a resource and to be available to these new landowners and even the real estate agents that will be there. Um, my coworker, Amy, she is in Paul Shation right now for the state 4H roundup. And so she, that's why she's not here with me, but she's having some classes, um, coming up at the library. She's doing the Learn Grow Eat Go, which is a youth gardening program, and that's coming up, uh, this month as well. And then I'm also having a private applicator training coming up, and that's for anybody that wants to obtain their pesticide license to spray on their own property. That will be the twenty-third. Um, and then Amy is also having a water bath canning class. Uh, she's doing that in conjunction with Raines County as well. And I believe this one will be held in Emory, but the next one will be held here in Canton. Um, and then some that aren't included in that little packet, uh, just a little. Month. Monthly update. June, our 4H charters are due this month. So we're getting all of our clubs together and. And, uh, just. Like, excelling our 4H program. Just by May fifteenth was our last time that we got updates on our numbers, and we were up ten things already. And the 4H year hasn't even started yet. So 4H charters are due in June. Um. Amy is having a kids in the kitchen camp as well as a kids crafting camp this month. And then, uh, the last thing in June is I am doing a result demonstration with Porteva. Uh, Gabriel Ranch, Roselle Sprayers, and Smith County, and Kaufman County, and Raines County Agents. Um, this result demonstration is going to be testing herbicides at Gabriel Ranch, um, through a boom sprayer. And Roselle is bringing their drone. And so we're going to be comparing. How the drone works up against the, the boom sprayer and, and seeing how that works. And so we will, we start spraying, uh, next week, and then we will have a tour that, of course, I won't let all of y'all see. So, um, July is the state 4H, 4H horse show. And we've got a couple of kids going to that and a couple of kids actually competing in the Petri D contest. And then we also will have our 4H banquet on the thirty-first. Um, August, we will have our 4H first three-year kickoff. Um, and then I will also have with my last second forge committee, we'll have a winter pasture program. September is when we plan to have a big, huge family kind of 4H meeting to get all of our 4H groups together where everybody can meet and greet and have a welcome for the beginning of the year. October, I will have a beef and forge program in conjunction with Raines and Wood Counties. Um, and then we will also submit our hay sample collection for our hay show, which comes up in November is our hay show. And then December, I will have a Trinity Valley Pestide Conference in Maybank in conjunction with Kaufman and Henderson. And in between there, Amy and I are at lots of professional development, um, lots of conferences and things. And then we also serve on several district for district-wide 4H committees, um, which include a lot of district 4H events, um, and even state events. So. Our calendar's busy, and we're just rocking and rolling, I think. So. But we do have Facebook. Everything I've talked about will be posted on our Facebook and our website. And of course, if you come to our office, it's on the glass right there when you walk in. So we've got lots going on, and we hope to see everybody.
As you know, no, Allison just came aboard with three months ago.
March.
And, and she and Amy have hit the ground running, and we got so many expense going on. But you also don't know, we didn't have an ag agent for over a year. And so it kind of lagging. And they're making, they're catching up. They're, they're making up for that time. So I appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Y'all want to the library? You want to make a?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm Billy Jean Cole, President of Friends, the Library for Van Zant County Sarah Norman Library. In front of you, I've given you an invitation to our premier. Twenty twenty-three. All together now, unity, friendship, and kindness is our theme. And this year, to start us off, we have the Canton High School Drama Club performing. This is a first for us and a first for them. We're hoping to make it an annual thing. Um. We are. Do have a very busy schedule, as you'll see, it's two pages, and that's just during the July. Because we have three and four events going on every month. Keeping our kids busy, we have the therapy dogs, we have our Lego team, we have storytime for the littles. We have Family Game Day. We're doing the Learn Grow Eat and Go with. The Ag Life. That's going to be a great seven-week program. The kids are going to plant a plant, watch it grow. At the end of the program, they actually get to make a meal with it. And Amy's going to teach them how to cook something new with whatever they happen to grow. And that's a seven-week program going on. So we invite you all to the sixteenth. Especially for our premier and to see our great Canton High School kids. Some of them graduated this year, but they still are volunteering at the library. We're very proud to have sixteen. Volunteers this summer. That are below thirteen and below. Excuse me, thirteen and eleven. We have a bunch of teenagers. We have one thirteen-year-old that we. Super love. She has her own floral business at thirteen from home. And she's gone home and works two, two days a week, the three, four hours, whatever we ask her to do. So we're getting really, really proud of the kids we have. We had eight of them at the Christmas parade, helping these guys out books. So Van Zant County's teenagers are really. Showing up this year. They want that on their resumes for college, that they were a volunteer at the library, and that they've learned all the things they can at the library. So we hope to see you on the sixteenth. If you need transportation, give us a call, we'll come get you because our parking lot's going to be packed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think. Thank you so much. All right. I have a public announcement. I am so excited. Uh, those of you who know, we've talked about election equipment, and we made a commitment that we would have a public demonstration of the equipment. And that has been scheduled for Thursday, June the twenty-second. At the Civic Center. At six, at five o'clock in the evening. And we have Hart. It's going to be on one side of the Civic Center and ESS, the other vendor. These are both two major equipment vendors in the state of Texas. They will both be there, and we will start five o'clock. We have designed our own sample ballot, which is just going to have some questions on it. We're not going to actually have candidates, but, uh. And, uh, those ballots, you will go and you will get to actually vote at the one, about, you get to vote twice. This is the only time you'll be allowed to vote twice. So you get to vote, uh, once for at the Hart equipment and once at the, uh, ESS equipment. And then, uh, at the end of the, at, uh, five, six fifty, we will close the voting now. And at seven o'clock, we will show you the. Closing process, what's involved in closing the polls. And then we will announce the results of the, uh, voting and, uh, have a question and answer period after that. So we're excited about that. I have the press release right here, which I'll, I'll put up, have up here available for everybody that wants one. Uh, in that regard. Are there any more general announcements? If not, we move on to, uh, item number three, public comments. And we have three people that have signed up. And, uh, we'll start with, uh, Suzanne Duke. You have want to speak on item four D, which is. Maybe, uh, budget amendments in the consent agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, on May twenty-second, uh, first of all, my name is Suzanne Duke. I'm a resident of Van Zant County, and I live in the city of. On May twenty-second, I sent the following email to the court. Dear Commissioners Court. Please owe me a copy of all fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendments that your court will be reviewing at the five twenty-four regular court hearing. If this is posted online, feel free to share with me that link here. Please send this information to me before the meeting. Thank you very much. I also spoke during public comments at the May twenty-fourth Commissioners Court regular meeting. Sharon and I did not receive that information. On May twenty-fourth, I received the following email from Keaton Caldwell, who's your assistant, stating. Please submit all information requests through the Van Zant County website. At Van Zant County dot org under the public admission request option. Thank you, Keaton Caldwell. I submitted that request to be at the Commissioners Court website. It has been ten business days, and I have not received that information. Once again, I believe it's very important that as residents of Van Zant County, that we have access to budget information of this county as well as any budget amendments prior to it being approved. Unless this is prohibited by statute that you can provide. Again, as of today, I've not received those budget amendments. As a side note, with so many requests via online through your website, the sender does not receive a receipt showing that the request was even received. You may want to review or change that policy to give confidence to the sender that you actually received it and that you received it on the date that it was sent. Thank you for your time and consideration among us.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, number two, Mark Driver, speaking on item number six, which is employee benefits.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. I'm a Van Zant County resident. My name's Mark Driver. It's nice to meet you. It's good to see. Here, Joe here. Uh, okay, so what I have on. This is. Discussing and consider employee benefit plan renewal plan year twenty twenty-three. I was wondering if you were going to be renewing the past benefits of these. Commissioners have enjoyed. What I have here is a document for a private road contractor, fifty-five thousand. There are several more like this, selling over a quarter of a million dollars. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it breaks state and federal law.
Could you explain to me how road contract deals with?
A road contract deals with a private paid contractor. These gentlemen here is, I would call it very nice benefit plan. And this document is just for fifty-five thousand. I was wondering if y'all are going to continue that practice.
Okay. Public comments are not designed to be a discussion. Just continue with your comments. You have.
Okay. Well, that's just what I wanted to bring to the table. And if we're not going to be discussing back and forth, I'm going to give this to Joe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next item, uh, is Tiffany Coffel. On item four A. Which is, four A would be. Minutes of the meeting. Is that what you wanted to talk about?
Well, it's a combination of past minutes and, um, the budget.
Okay. Well, we're not discussing, but there's no line up for the budget, but unless you're talking about it, go ahead. Continue with your, but, and I just, I just have to remind you. The court rules are the comments must contain, be limited to agenda items, anything on the agenda.
I. Well, I, um, I think it would. Connect to the budget, um, and the budget amendments that you're discussing today.
Okay. Okay. Continue.
So, uh, my question is, um, I would like to know what the purpose is for wanting to implement, um, the IBC building codes and requiring permits in the entire county. The taxpayers do not benefit at all from this practice. The only people that.
Tiffany, this is not related to the agenda item. I'm sorry.
But. This is not. You don't even want the money to hire the other sheriffs. I, I had a home that was broken into.
I appreciate your comments, but it's not related to any agenda item that we have here.
Well, I'm sad. I'm here.
Okay. And I. I am frustrated myself in the fact that we can't communicate because it's because of the rules of the court. That we can't communicate back and forth. There are places where we can do that, and that's called workshops. There's going to be a bunch of workshops scheduled in the next three weeks, and you will be available to come and speak your mind there and, uh, in that regard. But I don't, uh. The purpose of this meeting is to go over the agenda, and if you have specific items to address on the agenda, that's what the public comments are for. Well, I apologize if you did not understand that. Okay. We are now going to move on to number four, consent agenda. And, uh, we need to pull item number A, the court minutes from the, uh, twenty-second and twenty-fourth meetings because, uh. We've been a little bit busy with budgets and, uh, staff and Susan, uh, will have those for the next meeting. So, uh. Is there any other comments or desires? If not, I will accept a motion to accept. The consent agenda. All right. Well, I've got one D.
D.
I've got a question, and D, I need to pull. Okay. All right. And you're, uh, so, all right, we will pull item number D, which is budget amendments. Uh, so are there any others that we need to pull? If not, is there a motion to approve, uh, B, C, and E? And if it's sent agenda? So. Move. Person. Very good. All right. All those in favor say aye. Uh, all those opposed like sign, motion passes. All right, did you want to discuss the D now?
The only one that I, yes, sir, the only one I had was the hundred thousand dollars at the sheriff's office.
That is not in the, that's not in the consent agenda anymore. The revised is down under item number fifteen. So it was not part of it.
Well, then we'll have to remove the budget amendment that's in.
It was, it was removed in the updated packet that came out Friday.
Well, I've got the last packet and it's still in there. So I've got the last one that came to me. So.
So it's been, it's been removed. So is there a motion to approve the other budget amendments uh on item A? Which? To approve the amendments.
Oh, but if that one's been removed.
It's been removed.
I'm good with the rest of them.
Okay. All right, so uh, Richard Melton and second by Keith. All right, all the papers say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider proclaiming June fourteenth Flag Day in the week starting June eleventh as Flag Week.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here representing lots of people, but mostly I want to represent our country. Coming up, we have a holiday called June the fourteenth. And it's United States Flag Day, and it's a very important day that we should celebrate and be proud of our flag because it represents all the good things about this country. The US flag was established for our new nation on June the fourteenth seventeen seventy-seven. It was when they passed the first flag act. Then they said resolve that the flag of the United States be made of thirteen stripes, alternate red and white, that the Union be thirteen stars, white and a blue field representing a new constellation. Congress has passed several acts between seventeen seventy-seven and nineteen sixty that changed the shape, design, and arrangement of the flag and allowed for additional stars and stripes to be added with the admission of every new state. Our current American flag consists of thirteen horizontal stripes, seven red alternating with six white. The stripes represent the original thirteen colonies. The stars represent the fifty states of the Union. In our flag, the red symbolizes hardiness and valor, white symbolizes purity and innocence, and blue represents vigilance, perseverance, and justice. Just like this word. We present a proclamation for June the fourteenth for our county flag. Would you let me read the proclamation?
Oh, I thought you were. Go ahead.
Our Flag Day and throughout National Flag Week, we pay tribute to the American flag, the most recognizable symbol of the principles for which our republic stands. For more than two hundred years, the Stars and Stripes has represented liberty, justice, and the rule of law. Recently, as our nation has come together to respond to the coronavirus pandemic, our flag has been a reminder of the courage, tenacity, and loyalty that define the indomitable American spirit. Our great flag causes us to reflect humbly on the immeasurable price that has been paid to keep it so gallantly streaming. Throughout our nation's history, proud patriots have nobly answered the call of duty when our country needed them the most. The Star-Spangled Banner serves as an everlasting remembrance of the sacrifices of heroes of every nation and every, every generation that made in conflicts from the Revolutionary War to the wars in Iraq, Afghanistan, and the Middle East. Our flag ensures that we never forget the incredible sacrifices our men and women in uniform have made to defend our liberty and our way of life. The American flag represents the unity of our country and its people. Old glory should be revered and cherished as a symbol of all that makes America the greatest country in the world. As we honor our beautiful flag on this day and throughout this week, let us vow to never to forget the tremendous sacrifices made by patriots from generation to generation to ensure that the red, white, and blue continues to fly high and free. Today and every day, I'm proud to join my fellow Americans in standing tall and saluting our great American flag. To commemorate the adoption of our flag, the Congress by joint resolution approved August the third of nineteen forty-nine has amended and designated June fourteenth of each year as Flag Day and requested that an annual proclamation calling for its observance and for the display of the flag of the United States on all government buildings. The Congress requested by joint resolution approved June the ninth nineteen sixty-six as amended that annually a proclamation be issued designated the week in which June fourteenth occurs as National Flag Week and calling on all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. Do you want me to read them? Now therefore, pardon?
No, that's fine. We understand. All right. All right, is there, is there a motion to proclaim June fourteenth as Flag Day and a week starting June eleventh as Flag Week? Sign the resolution? All right, all of you in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign, motion passes. Thank you so much. Do you have the original?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, I'm.
Yes, just leave it here. Thank you. All right.
Can we get a picture? You want to do a picture?
We can do that in a minute. All right, uh, item number six, discuss and consider employee benefit plan renewal for plan year twenty twenty-three.
Good morning. We're here today for agenda item number six to renew our employee health benefit plan. This is for our county employees and their families if they choose to enroll them in insurance. I apologize that you did not get your renewal packet. I didn't realize until I looked online this morning that it wasn't in there. So you're getting a paper copy. Judge, I know you got yours on the twenty-third when I got mine. This is our renewal through TAC. Basically keeping us, we follow a grandfather plan that we've been engaged in for quite some time, allowing us to keep lower uh maximum out of pockets to have no increase on deductibles. And so today we're just here to get a renewal on that. I did bring Deanne Miller with some of our. And she's our broker and she helps work directly with TAC and all of our other benefits. And so I was just going to let her speak a little bit about what TAC actually helps us do to keep our prices lower and the things that they offer and that she helps us with a little bit in detail.
So they, in a standard market, which I deal with on a regular basis, when you're not a grandfather plan, then um you can lose the um you can use, lose the ability to have a lower max out of pocket. The importance of a max out of pocket is your financial safety cap. That's, once you get that for the year, uh, then that's all you have to pay. The insurance company pays the rest. Once you go in a standard market, um, that is about eighty-five hundred now. And for the year, this uh county counties is at forty-one hundred. So we don't want to lose that. And they went up on the rate seven point two percent. But in the twelve-month medical report, you can see that out of the.
It's a twelve-month medical report and it's actually a page one.
A property.
It'll look like that.
It shows total contribution means premiums that you pay versus the pre, the claim that they pay, medical pay, pharmacy pay, the total they pay. There's only um the amount that they paid out in claims is almost the same amount that you have paid in. Here, that with an exception of twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-one. So the seven point two percent increase, um, that's what they look at, is those claims being with the technical station of counties being that you get to pull the rates with everyone in the county so that you get the benefit of healthier, younger people um to um help, you know, lower the claims amount that they're paying. TAC helps with employee, not only just employee benefits, but they help the county with compliance and laws that um pertaining to them. That is not my specialty. That is TAC, and that's all they deal with is county. So the main things that I would want to point out is that in the standard market um outside of the county with the rates and the claims that you're paying, you would be looking at a minimum of twelve percent rate increase. So the seven point two is very low for the claims amount. And the fact that you want to stay grandfathered because you don't want to lose the benefits that will go away on. And if they're not grandfathered or Affordable Care Act, then each year they can change that plan and they each year they tweak it to get your rates down by taking benefits away. But that's a safety net, a financial safety net, and the importance of staying with TAC um compared to the standard market. I write with the standard market every day. I see with our company has employees from Virginia to El Paso, so I see planes all over the United States. So I recommend that this is a good renewal.
Very good. Oh, no, do we need to pass something? Are you just giving us an update on what? I guess we'll discuss it in the budget.
Well, this is the renewal that has to go through court for you to sign off on. So you have to.
Well, since there was no paperwork submitted to show that I need to sign anything, I didn't know. So I guess uh the.
Well, it just didn't get put in the binder. I gave it. But we had some miscommunication on that, so that's why I apologize for.
Just, all right.
Yes.
Do you like, for each employee, now, uh, it's, it's fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents. That's kind of steep in it.
That's the increase.
Yeah, the increase.
That's seven point two percent.
Yeah.
Right, because currently we're paying seven seventy thirty for an employee and it will go up to eight twenty-five seventy-six for an employee.
The difference is.
That's per month.
Yes.
Have you any idea what that would cost taxpayers a year for the entire insurance program?
I didn't, I didn't do the difference in, but see what it would actually be, no.
I'm sorry.
The increase, annual increase would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Thank you.
But without staying with something that's at seven point two percent, we're liable to pay a whole bunch more if we reach outside and get increased by five to eight more percent.
I, I wouldn't want to lose. I wouldn't want to lose our insurance plan through TAC, but it's just that things are getting expensive.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're absolutely correct.
And the only way that I can justify that increase is when you look at how much you paid in premiums compared to how much they paid in claims.
Yeah.
There's, that's what they look at when they. I just the rates.
So is there a motion to approve the renewal with TAC? For the uh employee health insurance. Then by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
There, uh, yes, for a second, but there's some more discussion.
All right, that's what I want to get to. All right, is there additional discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to make a comment. I can't, I can't not understand why uh somebody were talking public comment and then not stay when we get to the agenda item. But uh I just want everybody to know this is strictly employee health benefits that we're talking about. Uh, what was alluded to earlier, there, there's no such thing. There's no such personal benefits for anybody that sits on this side of the bench to have their driveway worked on. So let's get that straight right off the bat. But we're talking about health, health insurance right here and uh and no, no other benefits. I just wanted to bring that out to the, to the people that are watching and the people that are sitting in this audience. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alls in favor renewing the benefit, employee health insurance benefits with tax, say aye. Uh, all is opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider a plat approval for Prairie View addition located in Van Zant County Road thirty-five oh two in precinct three.
Yes, sir. This is a, a two-lot subdivision, a, a piece of acres that they're just breaking into. So that they made two lots, so it makes it fall within our subdivision guidelines. They've met all the, all the requirements. They've, Brian Abbott's looked at it. They've paid Brian Abbott seven hundred and fifty dollars. They paid seven hundred and fifty dollar filing fee here with the county. So I make a motion that we approve this for filing purposes and that we waive the seven hundred and fifty dollar uh plat approval fee because I paid that, that much to Brian Abbott.
All right, motion made and seconding is further discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider plat approval for uh Parkwee addition located in Van Zant County Road thirty-seven twen- uh twenty-seven in precinct three.
Yes, sir. This is exactly the same as number seven, except excuse me, except it's a different location. It's uh around six acres that the, the gentleman is dividing in half, which so it made it create two, three acre uh lots. And so it became that small subdivision. It's out uh close to the Lakeview uh area at Lake Tewocne. Uh, they've done the same thing. Mr. Abbott's looked at it. They paid Mr. Abbott seven hundred and fifty dollars for the review fee. So I make a motion, we approve this for filing and we also waive the final seven hundred and fifty dollar uh applicates, the final fee uh on, on there, so that we, they'll only be out for fifteen hundred dollars. That's a motion by Pearson.
Thank you. All right, motion made. Second, any further discussion? If not, alls in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider plat approval for Wolf Creek Ranch located in Farmer Market twenty-nine sixty-five in precinct three.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to table this. We're working real hard with Mr. Abbott on this, and there's a few things that there's some discrepancy on. This is the one we had our special session on. We went over everything and we're working real hard on it, but they're not quite there yet. So I make a motion to table.
All right, motion uh made in second. Alls in favor say aye. Uh, opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item.
Do you need us to say?
That would be a lot easier, yeah.
Okay, we'll start then. I will. Item number ten, discuss and consider approval of sale of two DA firearm, office firearms.
Morning.
Good morning.
DA's office has several firearms in its inventory that we have uh acquired through forfeiture. We take them from criminals. Uh, most of them wind up getting auctioned or destroyed because most of them are gun, sometimes when they're good firearms, we actually put them into service assign them to investigators or assistant DAs as their duty weapon. They're uh traditionally in a DA's office, when people when lawyers leave the office, they are afforded the opportunity to buy their service weapon. Um, y'all know that I've lost two lawyers recently, um Hillary Heisel and Tyler Woodlike. Uh, both of them, their last day was last Friday. Each of them had been issued a firearm. Hillary was issued a Sig Sauer three eighty, serial number twenty-seven A oh four eight oh one five. Uh, Tyler was issued a Beretta ninety-two, nine millimeter, serial number B E R six nine three nine three nine. I'd like permission to sell those firearms to, to each of them. Um, as I said, they came to us through the forfeiture fund. Um, they were put into service as chapter fifty-nine allows. Um, at the end of their service life, we are allowed to sell them as we would even with a duty weapon. If we purchase the duty weapon, at the end of its service life, we're allowed to sell them. I'd like permission to sell them each for a hundred and fifty dollars to Hillary and Tyler in recognition of their service to the county. Hillary was here a little over six years. Tyler was here a little over seven years. Um, they both did a very good job for them.
That are motions? They're saying?
Second, Melton, but I got, I got, I got a question.
All right, discussion.
How does that, how does that farm get into the system through the, through the federal farm? That's being transferred to?
Yes, so we, we have to do everything we normally, anyone would normally do, will pipe in their names, run a criminal history on them. They both have CHL, so I don't have to call into the next system. Um, but we'll make a copy of the criminal history, a copy of, of their CHL and put that into our inventory, our inventory record.
Any more discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Uh, and we are going to miss Hillary and Tyler. The item number eleven, discuss and consider going out for bids for a used rubber tire, nine-wheel pneumatic roller. Is this?
Uh, the reason, one word with uh Commissioner Melton, he might agree on that, but it got worded from precinct two, so I couldn't purchase off that process, so I'm putting back out again. The bid process, so I can purchase.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Lepran, by Commissioner Pearson. Any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and approve the file invoice from Calvary Construction for repairs to the district courtroom. Background, the district courtroom suffered water damage to the ceiling back in August of twenty twenty-two. And we finally got everything taken care of. We had an initial uh quote from Calvary for the repair at ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, and then we revised a lot of, uh, additional work had to be done for the plaster and other work. And so the revised bid was for one oh seven, six thirty-five, one hundred thousand one hundred seven thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. And then the final invoice that came in, uh, and that revision was on March sixteenth. Final invoice came in in April. It was at ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four uh or thirty-seven cents. And the re, the difference is we, there was a lot of changes in the scope of work uh between uh January and the completion date uh due to various uh things that we had to do. So anyway, the, the final bill is ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, of which we have already paid thirty-four thousand dollars for the asbestos abatement portion of that. So the balance due is sixty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is all covered by our insurance company, uh, less the deductible amount that we have to pay in that regard. So that's the lead up. Is there a motion to approve the invoice and the payment for sixty-five thousand three ninety-four thirty-seven?
So move, Melty.
All right. All right, motion made. Second, any further discussion?
Yes, and, and to let everyone know, we've uh, we've already met our deductibles on, on the, the claim on other things. So this will, this will all be uh covered from the insurance claim.
All right. Alls in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? Motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss and approve, except items donated in the month of May by Winning Strategies Marketing. This is the final list of equipment and things that were uh taken from Winning Strategies. This is the final list of equipment and things that were taken from Winning Strategies warehouse when they closed down. Is there a motion to approve this list? All right, we got Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner LaPrada. Any discussion? All is in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider precinct two Roden Bridge items to be auctioned off through the Rene Bates Auctioneers, Inc.
Judge, Commissioner, this is my agenda. I don't, I'm just got some old equipment. And some equipment that's, we can't use anymore. We can see the list. I'd like to court permission to auction these off through Rene Bates. I'll make that motion that we auction these off.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All right, discussion. You got what, three Kubota tractors in there?
Yes.
You already got replacements for them?
Yes.
You did? Any discussion? If not, all's in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider transferring sheriff's office lapped salary, lapsed. Salary funds for the use in the building maintenance and purchase of equipment for the sheriff's office.
Good morning. We've got some issues on the sheriff's office we'd like to get fixed. We're doing okay on budget. Makes it two thirds of the way through. I think we've got four months of June, July, or September. So as we're kind of winding things down, I called up and doing a couple of repairs there because we had some unexpected repairs come up through the year. We had to replace two of the lift station pumps. And I think these pumps wound up costing us. Somewhere around a little over sixty thousand dollars, I think by the time they were finished. Then we had two hot water heaters, big personal hot water heaters. We had to replace the jail that cost us again, actually, well, it was sixty thousand dollars. So it's about a twenty, thirty thousand dollars unexpected. Since we've covered out a budget we had. We're leaving closing part of the lobby out there. We've run out of, we've run out of room. I've got employees on top of each other. We want to close in part of lobby. Also that lobby, we put that wall in. We'll give a set of another layer. Of security for our dispatch office. Where they're not opening up the door directly into the lobby. That's one of the things we'd like to get done. And. We created this new. Position. It was pre, last major sport for removed. Lieutenant Maddox who were into a position over the radio program. Emergency operations of it. It'd be case assistant, P ninety-five, P twenty-five radio system. He needed a vehicle over there with him, so I'm taking a vehicle with me, but I'm going to need to get a vehicle or replace that, that position when we fill it back in. And. In the jail. In our walk-in cooler, it's got a wall with a walk-in door. It's a heavy insulated wall up near. It's a cooler up front and a freezer in the back. It's just a walk-in one door. There's been a lot of wear and tear on the things since it's put near in nineteen ninety-two. The threshold's pretty well worn out. The doors worn out, the hinges and. We can replace that door, replace the wall, one of the two. Basically, it's very expensive to put that thing in. I've talked to a couple of companies. That thing, they cost well up to, if we replace the wall, up around ninety thousand dollars. I know some of y'all have seen the wall. Dimension wise, it's not as wide as the wall here. Maybe about two thirds of the length. I'll say maybe twelve feet. Oh, the rolling gate. Out on our, our impound yard, have, I don't know how tall that gate is. I think it's gonna be maybe ten, twelve feet tall with. Bar wire on top of it before we bring vehicles in when they get impounded for evidence, we have to hold them. There's a rolling gate that's been there probably, I don't know, that, that gate's probably been out here twenty-five years, maybe a little longer, not, maybe not quite as long, so. The gate's not on a track. It's just on wheels and time and wear and tear. The way that gate's pretty heavy, rolling back and forth. That gate's become, it's a handful to get it open to close. We could just replace the gate itself. It's not on a track now, which needs to be the rollers. Because when you roll that thing, it has, it will follow a straight line. And we've had folks get their toes rolled on with it and trying to struggle with that gate. So it's pretty heavy. It should load a little better with back and forth. We can get that given replaced. So that's your request that I had there for you. Oh. Where our records office is, there's a sliding window there replacing that window. With a circuit window, records for public consumption.
And new vehicle?
Yes, new vehicle is going to be placed one for Lieutenant Maddox, vehicle being carried over, to be getting another vehicle replaced.
So the summary here from your deal is to construct a new wall. And remodel the old radio dispatch center and replace the customer service. That's, that's thirty, thirty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Replace the rolling gate at the impound yard. It is thirty-six hundred and fifty dollars. On the jail, replace the wall cooler, walk, walk-in cooler. Cooler door and wall is estimated nine thousand dollars. And then purchase a new Tahoe for the sheriff's office. That's seventy-six thousand dollars.
Yes, that's.
Okay, and that, that, that means all the radio equipment and camera system and that. For a total of one hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And this, what you're proposing to do is pay for this. Just transfer within your own budget.
Yes, there's money to cover this from the last salary.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the transfer?
May you bread.
All right.
Second Milton.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Joe, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for every bit of this. But with the exception of the walk-in cooler and the gate. These, the rest of these things are things that I believe we should do in budget time that we're fixing to go into. Because they're not emergency. We, we don't. We shouldn't be amending our budgets on, on things unless, unless we're in an emergency situation. That's why we do, that's why we build our budget. So I'm for this, but I'm not for it right now. I would, I would rather. This fail myself with exception of the walk-in cooler. We need to fix that. We need to fix the gate because we don't want anybody hurt. But the remodeling and other things, I would rather say us put it. I, I think we do our public. We serve them better when we're building these budgets to allow for these things like this at, at budget time. So that's, that's, that's my two cents for it. So I won't be able to vote for it, but I am for it if we do it, if we do it at budget time.
Yes. I was just looking at ways to get this thing done.
Yes, sir.
Soon and later, so that's.
But as, as point out, we're not asking for additional money. We're asking these money that we didn't allow, that he isn't able to spend on salaries because.
I understand that, but you're still, you're still adding things to your budget that, that we did not put in that budget. You should not change your budget unless you have an emergency situation or you're in a bind. And you're, he's, he's, I can't buy fuel anymore and I need to move some money from one place to buy fuel. Or he, or he has things out there that he has to have done like that door. We don't want that door falling on an inmate. We don't want that gate to, to fall on somebody's toes. Yes, we need to fix those. If he's exhausted all of his money because he had two pumps going out. Two major lift pumps go out here in a year and he exhausted all of his money from his repair items. And yes, we've got to fix those. But we don't have to take money from something that's left over and remodel a building right now. Let's talk about that at budget time and put it in next year's budget. I'm a hundred, I'm a hundred percent for it, but I don't believe we're doing our budgeting process right. When we come in here and change things in the middle of the year because all of a sudden we've come up with another idea, whether it's me or anybody else.
Well, I believe originally it bugged in two of this work. The con was pumped went out and the water heater went out. He had to ship the money to the end of the year. I think that's what happened. It just. At the time, if it any other way around, we'd be moving the money for the emergency repair. But because he had built his budget waiting. He wound up spending that money for the emergency repair.
I'm sorry, Chad. I was in last year's budget. We built it and there was never anything coming in before when I was here to say, I want to remodel the foyer of the sheriff's.
I was going to call it, I mean, it's been made before last year, but.
England, I'm not, it's not in, I'm for it, but I'm.
Well, it's. None of us is clairvoyant and can anticipate the needs for the. We, the budgeting process is to anticipate the needs at the time that the budget is prepared. There are additional needs to come up and that's, that need to be looked at. And that's why we do budget amendments. That's why we have contingency counts to take money out of. I don't see what the point would be if you're in agreement with it. Why we have to wait six months?
Because it's not, it's something that we can postpone and, until we can put it in next year's budget.
So the sole, the sole point of waiting six months or waiting is, is, and not getting these things done now is to put it in a different year budget.
I'm trying to make our budget legitimate. I want the people of Van Zant County to know when we build a budget up here. That we have worked on it and this is what we want to do and we're going to try to stick to this. I'm not for the people of Van Zant County coming back anytime we get an idea that, that. That we've got something that we can. Postpone a little bit. It's not an emergency. It's not an emergency that we remodeled it for you up there. It is an emergency that we fix a door on the corner. But I don't know why me and you are going back and forth. Take the vote. I, I won't vote for it. Y'all vote for it. That's fine. We're not, we're not always going to be a hundred percent. That's my feelings. I believe we should build a budget that is as accurate as we can build. When we're in here doing it during the budget workshop. If we're not, you're wasting my time. Come in here. Let's just throw something out there and if something comes up, I'll come in here.
We're not wasting your time.
If you do not stick to that budget and you just come up with any time, something comes up, we're going to change it. You're wasting my time of me sitting in this budget workshop and, and wrecking my brain of how we're going to make all this work.
Is there any further discussion? All is in favor say aye. Aye, all is opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number.
Yes, sir.
Sixteen, discuss and consider salary adjustment for DA investigators to be paid out of discretionary funds.
My turn again. And once again, I'm not going to lose you any money. Kind of going to the point that Commissioner Pearson just made. There, there's been a lot of. Salary adjustments this year for law enforcement officers. I didn't realize it, but one of my investigators had been left out of some of those. And it resulted in him. Being tempted by Sheriff Carter to go out there, but. But in the end, it stayed with me. I'm not asking y'all because I do understand, Commissioner Pearson, exactly what you're trying to do with the budget. I'm not asking y'all to make up that difference. You guys know I have discretionary funds, my forfeiture fund, my P T I fund. I can spend those on whatever I want to, but I need your approval if I'm going to spend it on salaries. And I'm asking for permission. To raise investigative wars and salary by two thousand dollars from my P T I fund, by five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars from my forfeiture fund. And that will put him back on par with what he would have made had the sheriff successfully stolen him away from me, which. I tried to block. And so far, I've been successful at blocking it. So I'm not asking for any budget amendment from, from the county budget, any money from the county budget. I'm just asking your approval to be able to pay their total of seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for my discretionary.
That's, that's, he's been left out of the raise process.
Yes, sir. Yes. I didn't realize that there was, I didn't. Y'all know I don't get to come to every commissioner's court meeting because I have other things going on, but I didn't realize some of the adjustments that have been made, that had been made. To some of the other law enforcement. But again, I'm not here asking you guys to increase anything. I have the money to do it. I'm willing to spend the money to do it. I just feel like he deserves to be paid a lot with everything else.
So move Pearson.
All right, motion made. Is there a second?
Very good.
No second. Any further? Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Would that go on now? When we get into next year's budget, will this? Continue that or will we come back at budget time and try to adjust it for? We're covering those things.
No, is this just for the rest of this fiscal year?
Yes, this would just be for the rest of this fiscal year. If, if. If y'all don't adopt the increase for next year, I will do it. I'll need your blessing to do it, but if y'all can't adopt it or choose not to adopt it for whatever reason. Then I'll, I'll do it.
That's my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
We are in a big disadvantage for the current jury that we're in, right?
I'll, I'll amend my motion to start it whenever you say. Sixty-four twenty-three.
Okay, well, I don't, we haven't.
I'm just, you can do, I just want to know.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the transferring. From the discretionary fund, seventy-one hundred and sixty dollars. For the district attorney to increase. Investigators. Sorry, to prevent him from going to the sheriff's office. That's the motion that I got out of this. Effective, effective June, what?
June fourth.
June fourth, June fourth, all right.
I made the motion and I amended to June the fourth.
Okay. All right, is there a second to the amendment? All right, any discussion on amendment? All is in favor say aye. All is opposed like sign. All right, now we vote on the amendment, the, not the amendment, but the motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. All right, there is no closed executive session required today. So I will move on to. Okay, the, the individual who's, who requested the executive session has said that it's not necessary. So I don't know what. What the executive session would be about.
Personnel.
Okay, but hasn't, hasn't been. It hasn't been posted or hasn't been. An agenda item. Considering the personnel.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, so I guess we will have an executive session. So that means we will close the current open public meeting at. Ten fifty-eight, no, nine fifty-eight. And we will go into executive session to discuss deliberate employment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Is the agenda. Okay?